And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in a business meeting July 7th, 2016. I'll have Mr. Cuthbert, County Administrator, take our role.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. We are joined this morning with Mr. Stephen Maccor, County Council, and our Clerk of the Board, Mary Rathke. I'll start with the role then. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. All please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, law.
Well, the first item, as we always try to have at the front, is citizen communication, but I have no cards. This is extremely rare. I don't know what to do. But I know what to do. We will start with a public hearing.
Yes, sir. So we do have a public hearing this morning. It's to consider a board order to proceed with construction of a local improvement district for street and storm drainage improvements on Starview Lane. And we have Mr. Ken Kent from our Department of Transportation and Development here to provide a report and recommendation.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. My name is Kenneth Kent, Department of Transportation and Development, and I am the Program Manager for Local Improvement Districts for the county, also known as LIDs. Today I am before you requesting that the Board approve an order to proceed with the construction of a local improvement district for street and storm drainage improvements on South Starview Lane. As a reminder, the LID is a public process available to citizens of Clackamas County to join together constructing public improvements. It's a financing mechanism where if enough of the property owners agree, the county will work with the neighborhood in order to complete construction of the project. And then when the project is completed, the funds are then obtained from the county or from the property owners through assessments, and there's an opportunity for the property owners to finance their assessments with the county over a period of time. In this case, neighbors living on South Starview Lane, which is located north of Beaver Lake with access off of South Creek Road and South Henrissey Road, signed a petition to form an LID and to construct improvement to sections of their road, also including storm drainage improvements. The LID includes nineteen properties. In order for an LID to begin the process, a valid petition would need to be submitted with the county, and this requires that at least sixty percent of the property owners, comprising sixty percent of the land, sign a petition. In this case, ninety-four percent of the property owners signed the initial petition comprising ninety-two percent of the land. And based on this petition, the Board initiated the LID process by resolution on February 25th, 2016. On May 26th of 2016, the Board approved the preliminary feasibility report for this LID and ordered staff to mail out notices to each of the property owners, notifying them with the assessment amount and giving them an opportunity to file any written objections to the LID. They're given a twenty-day period to file those objections, which are usually referred to as remonstrances or objections. For this, and to back up, this preliminary cost estimate for the LID is approximately forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars with the assessments for the property owners, which is based on length of road traveled, are one thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, two thousand, two-hundred-and-twelve dollars, and twenty-seven thou- or two thousand, seven-hundred-and-four dollars. The Oregon revised statutes that address LID formation state that any objections received by more, if objections are received by more than fifty percent of the owners, comprising fifty percent of the land, then an LID would be abandoned. For this LID, that would have required at least ten property owners to require submitted objection. But in this case, we've received no objections to this LID, so zero remonstrances. So effectively, we have with this high level of support, staff is recommending that the Board approve the order before it and direct staff to proceed with the construction of the LID. I will note this morning that we have Dale Williamson and Russ Lawrence, who are the petitioners for this LID, present this morning. If you have any questions of them, they've been working with the neighborhood and staff to keep this LID moving through the various steps in the process. With that, that concludes the staff report this morning. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Kent? All right. We'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. We'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the Board order to proceed with construction of a local improvement district for street and storm drainage improvements on Starview Lane.
Second. All right, motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion?
I just want to add that this is much better than the last one we considered.
That was a road improvement.
Yeah. Well, this is, is this an overlay too, or is this storm drainage?
Repair and patching of sections of the road that have deteriorated over time and some storm drainage improvements.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes five to zero. You came here all this way for that easy decision, huh? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Thank you.
All right. I'll ask the Clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay. The consent agenda for July 7th, 2016. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval of a renewal revenue intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake Oswego for medical direction for the Fire Department and Communication Center. It's not up there. I'm going to put that up real quick for you.
It's fine to have you on there, Mary.
No, I don't like that. Okay. Number two, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for a Public Health Officer. Number three, approval of a renewal grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Continuum of Care Program for the Homeless Management Information System. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and underwater environment services, a Board order authorizing refund revenue bonds to reduce debt services expense for Clackamas County Service District Number One. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners, you want to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes five to zero. And now, it's the County Administrator update at ten minutes after the hour. It's unheard of.
So I'm just wondering if we still have time left for my report this morning.
I'm sure it'll be long.
So I've got a few items to share with you. One has to do with our River Health Stewardship Program, which is coordinated through our Department of Water and Environment Services. It was awarded, it has awarded two-hundred-and-forty thousand in grant funding to some sixteen local nonprofit groups to work on restoration and enhancement of watersheds within Clackamas County Service District Number One. The projects include habitat improvements, stormwater facility installations, public education, and public outreach. It's worth noting that this program won a 2016 National Association of Counties Award in the category of county resiliency, infrastructure, energy, and sustainability. So good work on the part of our West staff. And then congratulations are in order to the local youth who just recently graduated from our juvenile drug court. This is an intensive eight-month program for referred at-risk youth offenders who receive a combination of what would be group substance abuse treatment and individual and family counseling. It's been a great program, and so I want to extend my congratulations to the graduates of that program. And also want to thank our Clackamas County Safe Communities and Drive to Zero Campaign, who's been working with the library network. What they've done is they've been able to outfit the two new box vans serving the network with the vehicle wraps that promote both libraries and safety. And so we have images now on these vans that support various initiatives that include messages about transportation reaching people, which is really a social services support program, and includes information about personal flotation devices from county parks, some information about library themes and transportation safety, and tourism. So funding for the project came from state-funded Safe Community Grant Funds to do this. It's a really good example of county departments working together to promote safety and a more livable community. And then finally, I wanted to extend some kudos to our behavioral health staff, who've been doing some things to make life better for our senior citizens in our county. Staff there have created what we call Boomer Boxes, and these are distributed to each of ten senior centers in the county. These boxes include what we call Fun Brain Games, information on healthy aging, as well as diet and positive mental health. It includes an iPad packed with helpful information and other specialty-made care packages that are delivered throughout the month. So earlier this week, our behavioral health staff presented the Senior Citizens Council, also with a thirty-thousand-dollar check, which will allow them to offer much-needed guardianship services to ten additional Clackamas County residents. So thank you for that work as well.
Jim wants to ask you a question.
So I believe at the work session, we talked about our grant program, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Do you have the information on when they apply?
So the, the request for proposals is open now. It opened on July the first, and if you don't mind, I'll take a quick look at the news release and let you know what the closing date is. It lasts into August, and I believe the middle of August is when applications are due, but if you bear with me for a moment, I will do that.
It's our small grant program.
Small grant program.
I think the award, Jim, what's the maximum we give out?
Fifty?
Is it fif- that much?
Up to fifteen thousand?
Fifteen, I think.
Fifteen, okay. And the purpose is really, you know, it's been a while since we really talked about this. It's like feeding the hungry, providing services to senior citizens. Usually that money, well, that money usually goes to, it always goes to nonprofit organizations. We've furnished shelving refrigerators, food banks, various items like that. And one of the Commissioners, Schrader, mentioned that perhaps that veterans group might want to look at applying for this grant, and go ahead.
So the, you know, last year, we had some fifty-three groups receive funds ranging anywhere from eight-hundred-and-fifty to fifteen thousand dollars. The application period will end on August 15th at 5:00 p.m., and folks can obtain that information by going online to the county website. Mary's got the website up right now as I'm speaking. But the grant program is available to local community-based organizations that do good work on behalf of vulnerable people in our county.
Thank you.
Great information. Thank you. It's time for Commissioner Communications. Start with Commissioner Savis.
Okay, well, it was last week at this time, we cut the ribbon on the Sunrise Corridor, and I wanted to, we discussed this a little bit on Tuesday, I wanted to share with everyone how much time, effort, planning goes into this. So it was Commissioner, then Commissioner Bill Kenimer and Larry Soa and Michael Jordan way back that initially made the investment and commitment into the Sunrise Corridor for as far as acquiring land and all the steps it took. Even though this Sunrise Corridor project, we only did one phase of a multi-step process, but it's a thirty-year-old, which is prior to those Commissioners I just mentioned. And on Tuesday, I shared, and I think we should also be cognizant of, that it takes a lot of long-term thinking and planning. It's one of our responsibilities in order to get these things underway. It takes years of engineering, planning, approval, environmental approvals, you know, finding the money, the resources, and putting the entire system together, if you will, to make those things happen. So I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that twenty years from now, or fifteen years from now, or ten years from now, that steps we took, vital steps we took, were key in making some things happen. And with a growing county, and as fast as our population's growing, we have that responsibility, and roads is one of those. And I think it's a proud day for Clackamas County to cut that ribbon and get that Phase One underway, but now we need to think about Phase Two and all the steps it will take to get that done. So hoping we can have that discussion soon, and I drove on it again on Saturday and Sunday and Monday and saw that underway, and I encourage citizens to use that bypass, that expressway. So it's kind of encouraging to see something happen in Clackamas County and all the roads that went along with that, that are underneath that or nearby on that project that have been happening for years. So a great example of collaboration, and again, I want to thank our Commissioners and our previous Commissions for seeing that through, because there was, the previous Commissions took, took part in that, making sure those projects were being done. So it wasn't just that one Commission I had previously mentioned. And again, proud day for Clackamas County. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
I believe that they said it had been thirty years since the last highway project was built. Did they say in Oregon?
Yes.
So isn't there one down?
Portland Metropolitan.
Yeah, Portland Metropolitan area, because there's another freeway being built that they've had a lot of trouble with. The interesting thing is that this project was bid in a down economy. It started out one lane each way. Then we, then Christmas one year, we heard that they were going to add another lane on each side, and that we were going to build a bridge, an additional bridge. And it still came out thirty million dollars less than the original estimate. It's just hard to believe. And so they're going to, their extra money, they're going to use on, on some connections and some lighting improvements around that intersection. And there, I was amazed how much work was done around the roads underneath and the connections to the businesses and the water, rainwater storage and all that. It's a great project. I did beat John down the freeway.
Yes, yes, you did.
You passed him.
I passed him down the freeway.
You passed him.
Yes.
And you passed our little trolley bus.
I think you were speeding, Jim. Were you speeding?
No, no, I was checking my speed.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, I felt I couldn't get a ticket. I was actually one of the first drivers on the Milwaukee Expressway when I was thirteen, which added access to my neighborhood, and I drove down that when I was thirteen, so.
Without a license?
Without a license?
Without a license, yes. I think that it's been long enough that I probably can't get a ticket.
Okay, it can't be a negative, okay.
Anyway, so anyway, it's great that that project is done and open. And Fourth of July, appreciated that there weren't as many fireworks around me. There were a lot, but not nearly as bad as it was in the past, because it's very dry out there. So thanks. I guess, you know, we had a short week, so don't have a whole lot of business meetings or meetings to go to. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I just want to say about the Sunrise Expressway ribbon cutting, it was a very fun experience. Everybody was jovial and happy and, and working toward a common goal, which made it happen. But I have to say, Jim, I think Martha beat you driving down.
She too.
She got lost, okay? She came in the back way, and she was the first one to drive on it, and I don't think you knew what you were doing.
No, I just thought, I just saw some guy with a, with a vest on, said, um, where's that ribbon cutting? And he goes, yeah, you can just drive up. And I'm like, okay, so I'm driving up.
It was very fun.
I parked behind the tent.
Martha, here's John and Jim behind us, and guess what? You were really the first one to drive on it.
She did it on purpose.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I was like, how do I get to this?
That was very fun. You know, July Fourth weekend, my family, we took off, went some camping, did some kayaking in central Oregon and a little fishing, and it was quite relaxing for a little summer getaway. But according to our nine-one calls, our nine-one-one call center, calls were down twenty-four percent over the weekend, which I thought was really remarkable, and fireworks complaints were down in the past year, six-hundred-and-twelve to two-hundred-and-two. So that was really a, a low activity on our nine-one-one system. Bob Cozy said he's going to call the other jurisdictions to see if likewise they were down. And I happened to be traveling on the freeway in Portland area for not vacation reasons, but for other reasons, and there was no traffic. I'm going, wow, what's going on? Maybe it's because it was on a Monday. People had to go to work the next day. Tonight, I will be at the Sandy and Mountain Festival Days Parade at 7:00 p.m. That should be a lot of fun, except I think I'll be walking in it, but I think it's going to rain. So I just hope people turn out and hope the participants continue, because there's always a chance we might not have rain. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader, the cheater. I mean, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't mind. Well, actually, there was more to that story, because I had, I had Caroline and Kevin, our two folks, usually it's Mary on speakerphone, saying, okay, I'm circling in the fog, can you please tell me where this is? So they're kind of directing me. And they actually said, go down two-twelve, which is kind of what I did, but like I said, it was the back way. So I just thought, okay. You know, I just said, just go drive up. So I toodled up and thought, uh-oh. And I made it in the nick of time, too. Just, just started, just started as usual.
Well.
Anyway, I wanted to talk a little bit about what fun we had on the Fourth of July. Basically, I was able to join the members of the Lake Oswego Public Library's Precision Book Cart Brigade and the parade. And every year, I get there with the librarians and the head of the library and their volunteer coordinator, and we decorate book carts. I have a picture right here. I don't know if you can see it.
Oh, yeah.
And we decorate the book carts, and this year, we practice our routines, because we actually do cart routines. So we have one, one, the children's librarian kind of yells out, you know, okay, you know, circle the wagon, or, you know, move whatever, just shouts them out, and we do these routines. We're usually quite the hit. Everybody, we're usually the big hit of the parade, because here you've got the librarians. And this year, we did a shush move, where we kind of did a pinwheel and then stopped in the pinwheel and went, shh, to everybody, and the whole crowd just, whole crowd just loved us. So that was really, that was really, really, really fun. That was a great, great one. Couple of other things. The draft report from AOC about homelessness and our housing shortages is just out in draft form. We're in the process of editing that, and it looks as if it'll give us a template for policy at the state level. So in other words, we will hopefully be driving the policy, just saying, this is what works. Legislators don't do stuff that isn't going to help us and isn't going to work for us. The other visit I had was the Metropolitan Alliance for the Common Good, and that is a group of or faith-based organizations. They came to see me the other day, because they said housing and affordable housing was rising to the top of their list. They're a group that works on social justice issues, and they heard that our county was with Commissioner Smith, and all of a sudden, we're getting much more, and Commissioner Savis, interested in maybe expanding capacity for homelessness of people that don't have, you know, a place to stay. And it was a really good meeting, and I think we can add them to our list as well for a group that we can, we can work with and part of the faith-based community. And finally, in our packet today, we actually have the approval of renewal grant with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Continuum of Care. And that is our group of folks that specifically takes that money and as a group, there's over thirty or forty people that meet monthly on this, and decides where the, where the resources from, housing and human, human development, where money goes for, for a tax, you know, for working with the homelessness issue. So, so that was really nice that we AOK'd that today, and it's going to be part of the work we continue to do. Other than that, yeah, that's the news from Lake Oswego. Okay.
Thank you. Well, you know, the Sunrise Corridor project, if you think about this, you remember back when the Mount Hood Freeway was proposed? And they had already moved the buildings, ready to go, and then all of a sudden, then, Governor Kytseba said, read my lips, no new freeways. And that has been the case since that time. Now, you think about this being the first freeway that's been dedicated in the Portland Metropolitan area in thirty years, how many light rail projects have there been in thirty years? I say, too many. You know, now, we're looking at the Southwest Corridor in Washington County, an estimate now, preliminary, at two-point-five billion dollars. Tell me that doesn't affect monies that we should have for roadways. It does. So I think back, if the Mount Hood Freeway would have been built, you know, those areas to the east, including the Damascus area, et cetera, would be well-served, and the people trying to get from here to Highway Twenty-Six would have a much better time than they're currently experiencing. I went down on Saturday anticipating what they call the Big Float at Barton Park, and spent some hours there and talked with some sheriff's deputies, as well as our rangers. They did a great job, because it had started early. I think we got there about ten, left about twelve-thirty. It had started early. They were partying right, right at the start there. And the rangers did remind more than several people that it's time to pour out that beer. But I thought that the crew and the free life jackets, there was a lady down there who lost several years ago in the Clackamas River, a twenty-six-year-old daughter, in that big rock, what they call that eddy there, that just swirls and swirls and swirls, and she was outside the eddy, but literally that swirling motion pulled her back in without a life jacket, and she died. They were giving out free life jackets, and it was just absolutely an embarrassment to see how many people came to be on the, on the Clackamas River without a life jacket. She had four-hundred-and-fifty, and they were gone within two hours. There were lines of people with their children, whom they brought as well, without life jackets, picking up free life jackets, because she, she feels it's a dedication to her daughter's memory to try to save just one life, just one life, and maybe she did that that day. But like I say, it's, it's pretty sad when people come up the Clackamas River, any body of water, without a life jacket, let alone no life jacket for their children. It's, it was reprehensible, in my way of thinking, but again, a very good deed on her part. My last thing I want to mention is that I'm the liaison to the Regional Waste Water Capacity Committee, and there was an interesting meeting last Thursday night. I will direct you to it, because you should watch this. It is at www.clackamas.us/west/. Now, on the left of that page, you will see down at the bottom, underwater environmental services, public meeting packets and archives, and there's a one and a half hour, almost two-hour video there, that I encourage people to watch, because it was, as Mayor Holliday claimed, there is political theater going on there. Mayor Holliday is the Oregon City Mayor. The political theater included comments by himself and the Gladstone representative that this entire project would have been sandbagged, was unfactual, and that the elected officials on that body, so this advisory committee, were making their decision out of fear and ignorance. He said that the, the work that our professional staff had done was a hatchet job on the proposal for the, let's call it the feces incinerator that had been proposed by those two bodies. And when the decision was made, again, these people are elected officials from Johnson City, Damascus, Happy Valley, Milwaukee, Gladstone, Oregon City, and unincorporated. They were making a decision, decision on their own after well over a year of study of the technologies. Now, they did vote for, for going forward on solids handling with anaerobic digestion. This is not a new science. It's very, very proven. And again, that decision was made by this body individually, by those individuals, not by the county. Yet, the accusations went forward that somehow this is a foregone conclusion, and the county had manipulated it. Mayor Holliday said he doesn't trust any of the county commissioners or the commission, and I think it's worth viewing, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor Holliday and Councilor Johnson from Gladstone walked out of the meeting early, said they would not return, and I think that's very unfortunate. So. So if you watch the, the video, it's, it's very entertaining compared to our meetings, I'll say that. But it also is very telling about the future in dealing with these particular organizations, unfortunately, public bodies. But I was very proud of the, of the body and the decision they made, and again, proud of our staff. Director Geist, Director Geist was very patient, even when the professionals that they brought in were slandered and attacked and, and treated rudely, and our staff held up to it very well. So I was very proud of Director Geist and also the rest of the staff for how they withheld the barrage. So anyway, that's about it. I don't want to, want to close on a sad note.
Could you do me a favor and just?
Oh, wait, this is so rare. I get to take over arts and culture. So, you know, I think it's so appropriate, right after sewer. But arts and culture activities in the county. Summer on the Grain. I don't even know what that word is.
Corollionus.
Of course, thank you.
Okay.
That's corollionus, I knew that. Portland Actors Ensemble, this epic, enthralling story of the legendary Roman leader Cassius Martius Corollanus, is one of the final tragedies written by Shakespeare. Every summer, Portland Actors Ensemble has produced at least one Shakespearean play free of charge in various outdoor settings around the city. And Friday, July eighth, that's tomorrow, from six to nine P.M. at La Host Baro, how was that? Performing Arts Shell at Merrill Hirst University. Victorian Demonstration at the Barclay House. Bookmarks were often produced from pieces of ribbon and hand embroidery for friends and family members. Come join the fun, it's free and all the materials are provided. Saturday, July ninth, from noon to three-thirty at the Barclay House in Oregon City. For more information about any event, go to the Arts Alliance website at clackamasarts, I don't do it as good as you do, Martha. But I'll quote with a Shakespeare quote, "All the world is a stage, all the men and women merely players." Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your attention today, and have a great day and weekend. This meeting is adjourned.